Can you hear us? Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, great. We had just paused conversation there for a minute. Okay, so open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So if you're joining us remotely, we are not monitoring the chat, but you can always unmute or turn your video on if you want to say anything. Anyone in the room? Or online? Okay, then we will move on announcements and staff report. I don't think I have any announcements. Does anyone else? I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
That's an announcement. Yes.
Good, good.
The only thing from the staff perspective is the city council did have a meeting last Monday, the 20th, and they held their public hearing on that last round of LDR amendments, so that interior corner fix and a couple other cleanup items. So that that was held and those were adopted.
Great.
Well, I guess I should say relatedly, they will be at their next city council meeting. Except getting a new draft, another draft of the city plan from us that reflects some changes, some small edits that they wanted to have made from their previous two meetings, their October 30th work session and their the discussion that they had after the public hearing on November 16th. So there's a few edits that are going to them and that will be going to their next city council meeting for their discussion and hopefully warning their public hearing.
Will we get those? Those edits before they before they approve them?
No, this is this is it's moved from the planning commission to city council. They will it's available in the city council packet. So that will be available when that packet goes out either Thursday afternoon, noon, or Friday morning.
So is their next meeting next Monday?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, do you think one of us should go?
I don't.
Like, do you expect a lot of conversation or just like?
I don't expect a lot of conversation. They had some pretty robust conversation at those two, the work session and after the public hearing. So they've talked through a lot of things that they wanted to talk through. There may be some additional tweaking, but I don't think it'll be a big conversation, but also I've learned in this job, I am sort of notoriously bad at guessing these things. So it may be the direct opposite to that. But Jessica, I will send you an email and let you know if we think that's a good idea for someone to attend.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, then we can get started with the discussion of LDR updates. As they're required by the S 100 Act 47 and the Home Act of 2023. We have a pretty detailed memo from staff in here. And I guess just to kind of reiterate the first part here, this is obviously not all of the things that we need to do for compliance, but it seemed like there were enough here on the agenda to give us a nice, big, robust conversation. And knowing that we will have additional meetings where we talk about both other pieces of this and probably these pieces again. So what you aren't seeing here is like a map of the sewer and water district, which we know we have to do, but you know, we can only do so much in one meeting. So we're trying to, you know, talking with Kelsey, we decided we could try to work some of through some of these pieces of it, knowing we're going to have another conversation about that piece, which is also a big deal. So.
Yeah, and just just a point of schedule, we have this meeting today, you have one meeting in December, the December 12th meeting. That is when we are hoping to be able to present some of those additional pieces. There's a good chunk of the S 100 Act 47 changes that are required that rely on or are only applicable to areas that are served by municipal water and sewer. So each municipality has the ability to define what that is for for them with some parameters. We don't have our mapping back for that yet, sort of mapping of a few scenarios and how we want to define that. But that we are hoping to be able to present with some of those questions. So you'll be able to see like, where do these policy decisions actually apply or not apply? Instead of thinking about it, you know, in the abstract. So you have the December 12th meeting for that. Actually, kind of nicely, you don't have a second December meeting. Traditionally, you don't have a second December meeting. So you do have close to a month with that information with both what you talk about today and with what you talk about on December 12th to really you know, spend every waking moment digesting it and really thinking through what you think the best policy is for South Burlington. It's a little bit different than some of our other times where it feels like we move quickly through things. We are trying to move quickly and get get some of these changes adopted to be able to come into compliance with state law. But you have a little more time to actually digest some of the proposed changes and some of the discussions that you all have on the 12th. So we are currently scheduling. We're thinking of this meeting, the 12th and the first meeting in January, which I believe is the ninth of January as fully S 100 related presentation and discussion. We're also holding the second meeting in January to be able to continue that if we need to, but we also would be able to bring back the transportation demand management stuff that we talked about at a previous meeting in that second meeting in January to hopefully be able to push, put these things through, not push them, put them through as a single LDR package is something that we have heard as feedback from our development review team is it is confusing and difficult for applicants and for our review staff to have our regulations changing every, you know, couple of weeks to a month. So we're trying to package some things together as as much as we can without delaying other things too much. So the intention is that more, there will be a bigger suite of things that can go forward in the February to warning in February for a hearing in March timeframe. Just so that everybody is understanding kind of where we are in a schedule.
Quick scheduling question. The meeting we had with the natural resource folks about tree, etc. Is there a place in the schedule or is that still being kept in the queue so that it'll come up? I think you said in February sometime?
It's it's being kept in the queue. It's pretend it's it's possible that we would be able to put it in the same round of amendments to the LDRs if that discussion is able to be had sort of the end of January, beginning of February. But we don't, what we don't want is if if the commission decides that 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 topic requires three meetings of discussion or or something. We won't be holding up the S 100 stuff for that. So that does push it out a little bit farther. We also had a little bit of discussion that the transportation demand management stuff is logically something to lump in with the S 100 things. So that's kind of our second layer of of consideration. So we're still looking at February-ish for for the tree regulation stuff to come back.
I was gonna say the way Kelsey's laid out this memo, there are a few things that are, as far as I'm concerned, no brainers because you basically laid it out very clearly. You know, on the subject of hotels and emergency shelters, for example. You know, I feel that we should adopt what you've what you've written, at least the state definition of a hotel and removing the motel and removing dormitory and because it's covered by group quarters that those kinds of things, I think we could knock off quite easily. If at least that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, well, it seems like we jumped right into the hotel, which is the first one, which is great. So I mean, Michael's kind of said it seems like a no brainer. I mean, do people have discussion about that part?
I just one quick question and and it has to do with the state definition of hotel. That it includes short term rentals. And the question I have about that, this may be the wrong place for it, but my understanding was that short term rentals aren't regulated in the state. But hotels are. And if a short term rental is classified a hotel, doesn't it get the same treatment? So I was just what seemed like a some discrepancy there. So if I wonder if you can clarify that.
I have a related question, which was basically, if short term rentals are included in that demo, does it mean that an Airbnb is a hotel? It's a short term rental.
Right, that is something that I also saw in the state definition. I'm not entirely sure how that would be read. I am skeptical that someone who would be reg who would be renting their home for part of the year would be considered a short term rental in this under the state definition. My understanding, and I have to sort of look into this a little bit further, is that that applies to things that are more like the condos at Stowe or something that they're short term rentals. It's not technically a hotel because it doesn't meet some of these other requirements. But it is being rented in the whole whole condo in a building of condos that are also being rented in the same way. So I'm going to have to, and I was going to mention that I have to dig a little bit into that 18 VSA 4301 definition and make sure that that all works with with our potential red rental registry stuff. And that's a conversation that I have to have with our city management. But that can also be stricken with the rest of the definition standing.
Maybe the requirement, at least for an Airbnb, that the that it's the primary residence of the renter must live there. In which case it wouldn't be a hotel. But you are renting out sleeping quarters on a short term basis. If you're an Airbnb. But I think our new rule that you the owner must be living there might take care of this issue that about my my doubts about it anyway.
So it that state definition, I managed to pull it up quickly, is a short term rental means a furnished house condominium or other dwelling room or self-contained dwelling unit rented to the transient, traveling or vacationing public for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days and for more than 14 days per calendar year. So it's it's a little bit of a different.
So that is that does cover Airbnb's.
And yeah, it absolutely covers Airbnb's. It's my question that I have to talk to others in the city about is how does that jive with what we're talking about allowing or not allowing in South Burlington? Because I don't remember exactly what that draft says now about sort of number of days per year and all of that. I think it's more than that, but I would have to I have to look into it.
So if an Airbnb were subject to the same rules and regulations as a hotel, I think that will be quite restrictive and might might be quite helpful around here because we need those houses for housing.
Right, but I think just in this conversation, that's that's a different conversation. That's the conversation about rental registry and and regulation of short term rentals. What I'm talking about here and proposing is that we align that South Burlington aligns the definition of hotel with the states for the purpose of both consolidating a few definitions in our regulations and also making it clear what is what establishments are not allowed to be prohibited from using public dollars to pay for lodging.
I think there might just still be like a question of do we need to keep short term rentals separate from hotel because we want to regulate it differently and different? I think I think no one's saying we shouldn't use Airbnbs for emergency shelters. Like, I don't think that's a question. It's more like some of our other rental registry pieces, like, do we need to have separate definitions for other reasons?
My question was definitely outside of this realm. It was like they're not being they're not being managed and and licensed and taxed the way hotels are. Yet if the state is calling them a hotel, why not? So that's it's a whole separate conversation.
So do we feel like we're okay with the way she has it laid out? But there might be a need for the short rental just to have a separate definition potentially. But in either case, we're okay with hotels and short term rentals both having this.
And are we needing to? Are we needing to have motions on adopting this tonight or no?
No, because that's because we are it's because of what I said before of intending to sort of cluster everything together. You would end up in that probably the second meeting in January, potentially the first, if the conversation goes very quickly. But at some point in January, getting a big packet from me of all the red lines. So this is sort of presenting the concepts and discussing the concepts. And then I will, as we do with other LDR amendments, I'll show you like, this is what it is. Here's all the stricken stuff. Here's all the new stuff. So that is extremely clean and clear.
Just to be clear in my mind, for now, short term rentals will be covered by the state definition. And therefore, in my mind, as it stands now, an Airbnb would be subject to the same rules and regulations as a hotel. And then the next question was the one that Jessica raised, which comes later. Should we separate them? My view is maybe it's not the best idea to separate them and because it's it would be good to to try and manage the these short term rentals more. What's the word I'm looking for? To see to make it more visible that they're actually short term rentals covered by rules and regulations which which cover other hotels that are in a sense also doing short term rental. They rent their rooms out for short terms.
So just as a quick clarification, Airbnb does collect real rooms and meals tax on short term on their short short term rentals. I don't know about sort of other websites and things, but so they are from a taxation perspective because that's at the state level. They are taxed as if hotel rooms. I don't at this point because we don't, South Burlington doesn't do some of the like inspections and things like that on single family homes, etc. They're not subject to that. But I don't know how that all will be work working out with some of the short term rental registry inspection system that's all being worked through by city council.
Yeah, I was thinking more of, you know, code compliance and safety. I know years I rented out my house for a long time. But I had to bring it into compliance with the local with electrical code and do quite a lot of work. Or, you know, all the smoke detectors have to be interconnected and those kinds of things. It's quite important in an Airbnb's safety.
And I guess, Laurie, just to kind of follow up with your like process. So tonight's kind of the first time we're seeing some of this and it's in like idea format. It's not in like a red line LDR format. So I think for tonight, like the way that we've sometimes done this in the past, as we talk about it, we make sure people have their questions answered. And then we try to like, one of us, sometimes I do it, try to like just summarize what we're thinking for Kelsey. So then she can take that feedback and like at a future meeting, bring us that red line. So for each thing, I don't think we we wouldn't need like a like a vote, but I think we'll just try to make sure everybody's questions are answered on each item. So we have like a general feedback.
Yeah, some version of consensus or like we'd like to see it in tovert like this this way or that way, like some some version of just some direction to me from the commission as a whole. But it doesn't have to be formal.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess one, one, a couple of words, the self-contained definition of short term rentals. I think that that's something that I just wonder if that if that could become confusing. Because
It says self-dwelling room or self-contained. It doesn't have to be self-contained.
And that's, that's where I have the real questions because the dwelling room or even or even a, you know, a like if somebody has an ADU as part of their house, I mean, that's more self-contained than a room. Sure. But it just strikes me that that those are kind of a different category than renting out, you know, an entire apartment or an entire house. And I wonder if maybe there might be come problems. You know, with asking somebody to have available as emergency housing, you know, a room in your house.
So nothing require, none of this would require anyone to open up their Airbnb or whatever it is. Even if defined as a hotel, you are not required to allow it to be emergency housing. The city, it's all it's saying, Act 47 is saying the city cannot prohibit hotels from being used for emergency housing. It's the other way.
It's the other way around. Okay, well, that's fair.
It's giving permission, not mandating.
Right. It's saying it's saying it's saying some city can't decide, we don't want people to be housed in our hotels. So we're going to prohibit housing to be paid for by the state on behalf of the, you know, residents. That's the other way.
Are we ready to move on to emergency shelters?
I just wanted to make sure with dormitory and group quarters that people were comfortable with that.
I had one quick question about the the group quarters and maybe I'm just being picky, but it was about group quarters and dormitories, which we're getting rid of, but housing individuals who are unrelated by marriage. So that means that married people can't stay, I mean, technically means married people can't stay in group quarters, but I know a lot of group quarters have married couples staying in them. So I didn't know whether whether we I don't know if we have any say over the wording of that, but
Absolutely. This is this is not the state definition. This is from the LDRs. So that can say whatever you like.
The unrelated by marriage or blood. You know, you can have a sister and a brother that are living in two different rooms in group housing. So it it seemed like putting that in there gets a little dicey.
Yep, this is the current definition of reporters. There are definitely definitions in our LDRs that are extremely outdated. And questionable for other reasons.
So I would at least suggest that that unrelated by marriage or blood doesn't
Could you say, could you say who are not necessarily related by and then list those things like just something? Like, isn't that the point? It's the point to say people don't have to be.
They're not all, they're not all a family.
Yeah. But family is so many different definitions.
I guess I, when you were, when you were talking, Lori, say like, just take out from who are unrelated by, take out who are unrelated by marriage, blood, adoption, fosterage or guardianship. So it just says a dwelling that houses individuals in a group living arrangement of intentionally structured housing by an organization or institution. Yeah. Because it keeps in the organization or institution. So it's not, it doesn't apply to, you know, grandparents living in a a home with their, you know, family. It's there would have to be an organization involved. So if just taking out that sort of familial relationship phrase.
Yeah, just it struck me as getting really confusing.
Oh, yeah.
Group homes, group quarters?
Group quarters are different than group homes.
And group homes is what like a retirement community?
Group homes are generally more things.
Like assisted living places?
Assisted living. People who need additional assistance of any sort of age. Transit some transitional housing. Yeah, there's a few other things.
Seems kind of confusing, but.
Yeah, there. So group homes is is defined by the state. So I can I can pull that up and I can send that out when we look at this again, but that is a state definition of group homes because those have some some additional protections, like a group home has to be allowed in certain areas like single family home resident neighborhoods. You can't prohibit group homes, but you could prohibit sort of a broader category of group quarters. Like you could say, I don't want a frat house in this single family home neighborhood. But if it's a group home for the sort of mutual benefit of of a group of people who need that additional sort of collective living arrangement, you can't prohibit it. So I was saying that could be cut. From the previous. Yeah. So I looked at the two definitions of hotel and motel, and they are slightly different in wording, but the major difference is that a motel opens directly with easy access to the parking lot. Now with the regulations not allowing parking to be built in the front of a building, that's not really a thing. It's not really feasible anymore. And the state definition of hotel includes inns and motels already. So it doesn't make sense for South Burlington to maintain a different definition of motel.
There a chapter that says or a paragraph that said something about nonprofit organizations or something? I recall reading that, but I don't see it here. And I couldn't understand like why that would that would have been exempt exempted. I don't know. I forget. It's like I meant to, I meant to copy that. Operated, yeah, because that's shall not include the following.
My question is, do all those refer back to the term short term rental?
Where are we?
We're we're back up in the paragraph above. I should have asked that question. Then I wasn't clear. This term shall not include the following. It lists four things.
That accepted from hotel. From the full definition of hotel, not from short term rental.
Oh, it's funny language.
It is. It's funny language and it's and it's, we can't change that from the state and unless it's, this is just my opinion, unless we have a really good reason to change a definition from what the state is defining it, it's a lot easier. If the state regulates hotel, we know that it's exactly the same in South Burlington's regs. But if there's a reason to change it, that's that's fine. But if it's just like strange wording, it's unfortunate, but I wouldn't necessarily.
And the four things listed are things the state.
Are that the state accepts from the definition of hotel. So some interpretations could mean something like assisted living, hospice care, etc. Because of the the broadest, the broadness of the definition of hotel could be considered a hotel. People are there for a short time, etc., etc. So they're saying that's, these things are specifically not hotels.
These are considered long term, not short term.
Well, it's just they have, there's, there's other policy reasons for them not to be regulated as hotels, sort of hospital and nursing home care. State and federal agency sort of lodging, stuff like the, you know, the National Forest has some bunk houses for, you know, work seasonal workers, things like that. Nonprofits for religious purposes, that was probably at some point someone decided to exclude them. This also can, the C.
Yes, it's kind of confusing.
C is confusing, but it also it it comes from somewhere for sure, and it probably applies for some things like summer camps. So you know, if your your kid goes to a summer camp and it's nonprofit charitable, educational, etc., like then it's not regulated as a hotel. It's regulated in a different way. It also that definition would include would lump in some of that other stuff we were talking about as group quarters. Sort of inadvertently monasteries, you know, some things that are in it would be inadvertently included.
Never know.
And then D is just really closely related to A. Some of these things are just the results of legislative process that they just kind of layer things in for different reasons over time. So as a as a whole, it can read kind of funny, but the other thing that's you could also do if you wanted is instead you could include all of this. Or we could hypothetically shorten it by including sort of the beginning part that's necessary for people reading the LDRs to understand what we're talking about, but then also refer to the state definition and where like the to the insight site to the state definition. So if the state definition changes, then the LDRs automatically change. There are pros and cons to doing that. It would automatically change, but maybe you don't want it to automatically change if the if the state changes it.
I think if we're going to use the state definition, we should just leave it.
Just take the whole text.
Believe the whole thing, yeah. Or just cite the text and not have to recopy it all.
Well, you'd want to, you'd want to keep some of it because what you don't want to happen is someone who wants to, you know, a resident of South Burlington wants to look at what does a hotel mean in South Burlington? And then it just, oh, go see the VSA is like, that's a bit of a runaround. So you'd want at least some of it, I think. But you could have all of it. You could have some of it.
I think we should keep all of it. My view is we should keep all of it.
Siri wants to know.
Siri doesn't get it.
He doesn't get it.
Okay, I'm I'm hearing keep the state definition, but put all of the words. It's my Siri apparently. Sorry.
Yes, that's what you're hearing.
Apparently, when I said it. But keep the, put all the words in.
Yep.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
We're onto emergency shelters.
Emergency shelters.
Again, I think these are fairly fairly straightforward. I think we should, we should add that category, emergency shelters to appendix C. Uh, we should use the state definition again. And I like your recommendation that we should include in the, in emergency shelters, that these all other um, facilities could be used as emergency shelters. Community center, cultural facility, educational, municipal, parks, place of worship, social services, recreation. I mean, it's the kind of thing that's been done already when we were flooded out. Uh, so I think we should acknowledge that.
I would actually like to see that expanded and include ADUs, tiny homes. I mean, if there's a, a flood situation and someone is open to having somebody stay in their ADU, or they have an RV in the backyard that is empty and someone needs a place to be housed, and it's based on an emergency, I'm wondering why we wouldn't make it allow or allowable to have any housing unit that exists be available if people want it to be.
I mean, I think that that would be because it is so small scale and individual, like I would assume that each individual property owner would say, like, you're welcome to stay in my guest room, you're welcome to stay in my, my, you know, heated shed, I don't know, like you, you're welcome to stay in a tent in my backyard, like, that would be um, not necessarily a change of use. It's more for things that where, where site plan and other review is, would be required for a change of use, that we would want to um, specifically say that you don't need to apply for um, a site plan amendment or something to be able to use it temporarily as an emergency shelter, where some things like single-family homes, duplexes, et cetera, personal living quarters, you wouldn't need any kind of approval from anybody.
So these don't need to be here. If they're excluded from this, they can still be used by an individual who choo- chooses.
Yeah, absolutely. There'd be no, there'd be no prohibition on anything. It's more, it's more, and, and, and really, it's more just making it clear that these types of uses that are generally large buildings that often are um, municipal or school district or um, nonprofit that you don't, like, nobody in those entities would get nervous of, oh, I'm gonna get this huge fine from the city because I didn't apply for a site plan amendment or, you know, whatever else. So you can say specifically, these are the uses that we're allowing. Um, the list that I put in, I pulled in because from my perspective, these are the types of uses that would be, um, would have the facilities to house people. So adequate bathrooms, adequate space, adequate heat. Um, I didn't, you know, there are other large buildings like warehouses, et cetera, that would be a roof over people's heads, but maybe don't have wastewater capacity or, or whatever else, where these are the, these are the semi, public to semi-public uses that would be designed for use by many people instead of, you know, three guys working in a warehouse.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that voluntary opening of.
Oh, yeah, would never be prohibited.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is because they're already allowed to have residential uses and an emergency shelter.
Yep, you're, you know, there's no municipal regulation that says that I can't. You're, you're not actually invited, but to, I couldn't invite all of you to come stay in my garage or in my house or, you know, I'm not telling you.
We have a perfect example, because we, we host people from the VSO who come from out of town.
Right.
The, the reasons are not because it's an emergency, but it's to save them the hotel bills, save the VSO the hotel bills.
Yep.
But notably, this, this doesn't include offices. Where I could, I could see that office space could definitely be used as emergency housing.
Yeah, if volunteered, I think.
But it doesn't.
A business could volunteer that.
But I, I'm, I'm thinking it may have to be added to the list.
You can't force a bit of, uh, an office can't have people living in it. So it would have to go.
There would be a change of use.
That would be a change of use.
So should we include office space?
To me, this is more like public.
Yep.
Entities, office space is not a public entity.
Yeah, but.
But I, 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 I don't think it belongs in that list.
Like, I don't think somebody could, like, I'm thinking of like my office, like, I don't think someone could adequately live in my office, there are families. There's like one single bathroom and one sink. There's no, there's, there's no like kitchen-ish facility, there's no shower facility, there's. I mean, there could be potentially an office facility which could potentially have all those facilities. But I don't think like all offices would necessarily be able to do that.
No, but you wouldn't want to preclude it. I mean, because that's the whole br- reason for writing this rule is so that they don't have to ex- uh, apply for exemption to the rules to be able to do it. And also during the pandemic, there were not very many people in offices, but some of the people who were in the offices were living there because it was just too hard to get to and from work. So it, it does happen. Um, and also in Vermont, you have a lot of small offices, you know, where you only have four or five people. And if, and if their house was, you know, made unlivable in an emergency, I would say that would probably be their first choice of places to live, would be at their office. So I, I don't think it should necessarily.
But I don't think we have to do anything because it's voluntary.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a voluntary thing. Yeah, but isn't that the whole reason for this?
The difference is, um, approved uses. An office isn't approved use, uh, residential use is not approved use for, for an office building. And if someone does that, they could get a citation for doing something they're not supposed to be doing. What I do in my house, I can do because it's an approved use. And it would just be making it so that if someone had an office building that had four offices in it and a kitchen and a, and a shower and laundry, and there was an emergency, they could say people can stay here, and they wouldn't be breaking the law, and they wouldn't, this allows them to do it without repercussion.
I guess how I would want to frame this is this, this list is the preferred sites. So like, these are, like, if, if an emergency happens, these are the ones that the commission and the city has said, go ahead, it's already an approved use, fill these first. Um, where then, because they have, they're more likely to have more bathrooms, more wastewater, more showers, more kitchen facilities, um, things like that, where I don't see a situation where you couldn't get an after-the-fact permit for housing people. If, if something ever came up and you, and someone was living in an office for two months, and the city said, oh, you need an after-the-fact permit, you could, or a site, after-the-facts, after-the-fact site amendment. I don't see a situation where the city would deny something like that in an emergency situation.
So it doesn't, it doesn't preclude it, in other words. Because that's the only thing I want to make sure.
It just, it, it, it doesn't give, and all this is doing is saying you automatically can have temporary emergency shelters in these places. Anything else requires some paperwork.
In very simple terms.
It's a policy decision to, that these are the places that the city has, wants to direct temporary emergency shelters to be as in the first order.
And just because that's allowed, doesn't mean that anything else is disallowed. These are just specifically allowed uses. You don't have to get a permit to, to put up some, a flood victim in your basement.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned because like when I lived in New Jersey, there were, there was an ordinance that said I couldn't have a home office. And I'm like, I was disobeying the law. I was disobeying the law the whole time I lived there, because I had a home, I didn't work there all the time, like I do now. But if, if there was an ordinance here saying that you couldn't have your, an office and a place of work in your home, that would be a problem.
It's really just the difference between being automatically allowed, without question, without any paperwork, and requiring to file some paperwork.
Or made more, these seem like they're maybe more official emergency shelters as opposed to
Yep.
That wouldn't be a public shelter, that would be a sh- a place to shelter for people who actually work there.
Right.
Yeah, which, which feels a little different than.
It does, yeah, it is, it is a little different situation. I just wanted to make sure that we had that discussion, though.
Yeah, I think that's a good discussion. Um, okay, oh, oh, Fran, thanks.
Also had this uh, note in here about uh, should we uh, include language that uh, tie, that ties the emergency to a declaration of emergency? Does that need to be in there?
It was just an option because it just says emergency shelter and temp- like, allowing things to be used in a temporary emergency. Um, I did, it's just an option for the planning commission to decide, like, can, can someone just say, this is, it's an emergency? Or does it require a state or federal or local level, like actual governmental declaration or not? Um, I don't feel strongly either way. It's, I don't think there's a, there's a ton of risk of people just sort of deciding it's an emergency when there's not a real emergency. And declarations of emergency are not um, hard to come by when, when something, when a certain shelter is actually needed, so it's, it's really one way or the other.
Yeah.
I would, I wouldn't put that in.
Sure.
Yeah.
And if there's a problem.
That in.
Yep.
That, like what you were saying?
I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't put that in because an emergency, uh, my house can burn down, that's not gonna be declared an emergency, but it's an emergency for me, and I would appeal maybe to the city for help, where can I go? So uh, that's very restrictive, I think.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. It's just my, my job as staff to present
Yes.
All options.
You know, I think that that's like an individual, but there could be like certain populations, maybe they're being targeted or, or something where like certain individuals may need, you know, shelter, um, that might not apply on a bigger level where you'd get the, just thinking about like all the hullabaloo around, like declaring the local emergency for COVID, and then you had to declare it over and, you know, there could, there could just be like a sensitive issue or certain population needs help, but I don't want to go through that whole thing. Um, anything else on that or? ADUs? Accessory dwelling units?
I have only one question.
Go ahead.
Uh, and that is an accessory structure is already, doesn't that cover an ADU? We say here specifically excluded from the provisions of article, one family dwelling on a single lot, its accessory structures and da-da-da-da. Isn't ADU an accessory structure, and therefore we don't need to change the language?
It is technically an accessory structure, um, but the dwelling unit part of it just makes it a little bit different. An accessory structure for, is like a, a shed or something, it's much, a much broader thing. ADUs also don't need to be detached. An accessory structure would be like your one family dwelling and your, your shed or your detached deck or a gazebo, or I don't know what you would have in your backyard, something else. Um, ADUs could be, an ADU could be in your basement, it could be in your attic, it could be above a garage, it could be, but, or it could be detached. Um, so we were just, I was just suggesting including that to make sure that an ADU um, is specifically mentioned to make sure that there's no ambiguity.
Okay, understood. We're going through this so that these will now comply with the new state law.
Yes.
And the only thing that comes up for me is the section around a limitation of size.
Yeah.
And I think.
So that is not compliance with state law. This is, we're touching the ADU section, and this is my suggestion.
Yes, but since we're touching the ADU section.
Yeah.
I, I think that, that um, the idea of limiting size when you're getting onto bigger and bigger and bigger houses and bigger properties, starts to make sense. ADUs, is the definition still that it can only be a one-bedroom?
No.
Okay, so.
No, I don't think it's ever been a definite, it has to be a one-bedroom. It's based with.
That was just in Burlington.
Could be.
It could be in Burlington, but it wasn't here.
It wasn't here, and it's not by state. The state requires that you, um, this, the thirty percent number comes from the state, uh, but you could exceed it.
So you could go to the fifty percent?
Yeah. You can't require it be smaller than thirty.
Yes. I was just thinking that when people are building these houses that are, are um, problematic in our given environmental climate, that um, limitation of size is, is to be a about valuable thing.
Yeah, so the, just a little bit of background on my suggestions here, I was um, looking at these numbers and thinking that on, for smaller homes, thirty percent or nine hundred square feet could be quite small. Um, and then, uh, especially when we've had previous discussions at the planning commission about wanting to enable two-bedroom and three-bedroom homes um, for our families. Um, nine hundred square feet is a two-bedroom at most, um, you that's, that's probably right. Um, you could probably squeeze in a three-bedroom, but it'd be really tiny. Yeah, two-bedroom is probably the, two-bed, one-bath is probably the, the most you could put into a nine hundred square foot home. Um, so I was saying, I was suggesting putting it up to twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the single-family dwelling to enable more ADUs be available to families. Um, so that was my, my theory there, but then the flip side is when you, when your single-family home gets, because it's defined as whichever is greater, if you put it as fifty percent of any home, you could have a six thousand square foot home with a three thousand square foot ADU.
Yeah.
Um, so that is, there is some limit there, and I'm not sure where the commission would fall on where that limit, this is my opinion, where that limit should be. Um, clearly would, anything that's a percentage of another thing is small, is smaller than it. Um, and would be accessory to it, but maybe at some point an accessory dwelling unit is, is truly a single-family home um, again, and should be subdivided on its own lot, um, from the city's perspective, or not built.
I- is the nine hundred or twelve hundred square feet the footprint or the livable area?
It's the area.
Ah.
Like if you look at your tax card and it says however many square feet, it's not the.
But have two levels of six hundred square feet each.
Yes, um, but there are other requirements, um, especially if you are in, getting into the setbacks, that there, there are some height requirements. Um, if you're within set, some of the setbacks and you can get a conditional use for that, you can't be higher than fifteen feet. Um, so that effectively precludes you from having a two, two-story home. Um, so then you end up with a larger footprint of a shorter house.
Only questions.
But that's, that's just, that's a protective measure for neighbors, so, but if you're out, if you're in the regular um, setbacks, then you can have a two-story home.
Yeah, no, I, I had a question. Um, so these numbers would be raised to fifty percent of single-family dwelling or twelve hundred square feet, so.
Or whichever, sorry, which, it should say whichever is greater, like the, like our existing language, the stuff in, in the language in quotes, no, whichever is greater.
Okay, so.
Is the existing language.
Okay, so twelve hundred, I was thinking twelve hundred square feet was the limit, it's not the limit.
No.
Okay, all right, I, I'm sorry, that.
The way that are, the way that the ADU regulation in, uh, three eleven is currently written is that an ADU is not to exceed thirty percent of the total habitable area of a single-family dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So you, if you had a three thousand square foot home, you could have a one thousand square foot ADU, which is more than nine hundred square feet. But if you had a twelve hundred square foot home, you could still have a nine hundred square foot ADU.
Wouldn't it also depend on the lot coverage?
Oh, yeah, all that, all of that would all, would still, would still apply. Every, all of those things would still apply, that's a different question.
Would, would still be uh, thirty percent?
It depends on the zoning district, but yes, it's somewhere thirty, forty, twenty, thirty, forty percent, depending on the.
The, the question for us is, do we want to put an upper limit?
It's two questions, um, two questions. Do you want to raise um, the percentage of a single-family home for, on the smaller end? And also, do you want to limit that sort of larger allowance at some point? So if you had a uh, three thousand square foot home, this would change it to mean you could have a fifteen hundred square foot ADU. But do you want to say if you have a six thousand square foot home, you can't have a three thousand square foot ADU? There's some number in there where you may want to draw the line between those things. So it's, it's both things where it's allowing smaller homes to have larger ADUs relative to their size, and also putting a cap on that somewhere, so very large homes are not allowed to have very large ADUs.
Well, they also have to be affordable, so we should have a not to exceed X square feet. Fifty percent, that's what we were talking about. Yeah.
That's what we're discussing, right?
But not to exceed twelve hundred square feet.
Um.
I don't know about the affordability part, it's kind of.
ADUs don't have to be affordable.
The eye of the, in the eye of the.
Sure, I'm, I'm just saying that like.
Might want to rent them out and. Might want to rent them out and.
So, right.
One other question, just to sort this out. If it's fifty percent or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is bigger. If I have a twelve hundred square foot home.
You could have a twelve.
Twelve hundred square foot ADU.
Yes.
Which essentially makes us into a duplex or a, or two family situation as opposed to an ADU.
Yes.
It's like, huh? You have a twelve hundred square foot home?
If I have a twelve hundred square foot home.
Yeah.
Right.
And I can have an ADU.
Oh, oh.
It's up to twelve hundred square feet.
Yep.
Then we have two buildings of the same size on the property.
It's just changing the numbers because you currently could have a nine hundred square foot home and have a nine hundred square foot ADU. So it's just.
Understand.
Which of the, where is that number allowed or not allowed?
The question is, is there a problem with having a quote ADU the same size as the primary residence on the building, on the property?
I don't think so, especially because twelve hundred square foot is still on the fairly reasonable home size. It's, it's not. Yeah, that's not, that's not a large home by any stretch. So that's the sort of question. Do you want to move it from nine hundred to twelve hundred? I guess there's three questions. Do you want to move it from nine hundred to twelve hundred for the very smallest homes as what, what you would be allowed? Do you want to move it from thirty percent to fifty percent, which allows sort of middle sized homes to have larger ADUs? And do you want to put a cap on where the people get fifty percent? And where does it go back to being thirty percent? You can't go lower than thirty percent. So you would always have, you know, a ten thousand square foot house can have a three thousand square foot ADU. That's required, that's allowed by state law. But you don't need to allow it to have five thousand square feet. So it's sort of three questions.
So could we, so it feels like we could keep it at the thirty percent because we have to have a thirty percent.
Yep.
Minimum.
Yep.
And that would mean that if you have a really, really giant mansion or just giant house, you know, you're by state law allowed up to thirty percent. But it feels like twelve hundred seems very reasonable. You know, and I like that it's in line with our cottage housing type because that was something we got a lot of feedback over the years of people liking that size and having them fit in. So maybe it could just stay the thirty percent, but have the twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred as a cap. And the thirty percent serves as the cap for a big. So if you have a three thousand square foot house, you can only have a two thousand square foot or a one thousand square foot.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the, just because I ran some numbers on this, then where that, what that would affect is people who have like twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet or so houses, or some of these like larger, but still three or four bedroom, single family homes would only have an ADU of twelve hundred square feet. They couldn't really go higher than that number. So if that's, if you want ADUs to base it to be capped for middle sized, single family homes around that number, then that also works. If you go above thirty-six hundred square feet or so, I guess a little bit more than that, about four thousand square feet, then you start, then it starts going up again. So you end up with, if it's thirty percent or twelve hundred square feet, most, basically anything under four thousand square feet gets a twelve hundred square foot ADU and anything above gets thirty percent of its floor area.
So ADUs are typically rental units or in-law units or something like that.
Children.
Twelve hundred square feet makes a very comfortable two bedroom home. It makes a tight three bedroom home. It, it can.
I would, I would argue it makes a reasonable three bedroom home.
Well, in some countries would say it's a six bedroom home, but anyway. Twelve hundred square feet is, is a good size. It's a size that is not gonna, that will tend to be more affordable than a fifteen hundred or two thousand square foot. So it, it supports infill housing that provides housing for families that can afford, that they can afford.
So I, I, I didn't, my sense is it's not the intention to build another single family home.
Yeah.
An ADU is accessory. And so Lori's point, it shouldn't be huge. I think twelve hundred square feet as a cap is reasonable.
I, I guess I, I'm okay with keeping the fifty percent up to a certain size. You know, if you want to go above twelve hundred square feet, I'm okay with that. If you get to three thousand square feet, I think it's a little big, but I'm okay with going a little bit higher than that. I think we should cap it at a certain pattern, but I'm okay keeping fifty percent for the smaller homes.
Yeah. Do you want to change the cap?
Do you want to change the cap to like twenty-five, two, two thousand?
I mean, that, that, I think that might be appropriate. Yeah.
I mean, you would effectively be keeping it as the other, as the same language, as, as sort of the whichever is greater language. But if you had a four thousand square foot home and you got fif, say, you say you capped the fifty percent allowance at four thousand square feet, you could allow a, a four thousand square foot home to have a two thousand square foot ADU instead of a twelve hundred square foot ADU because thirty percent of four thousand would be about twelve.
But you're saying, I think, and maybe I got this wrong, we can't have a hard cap at no accessory dwelling unit could be more than two thousand square feet or something. Because it has, we have to keep the thirty percent.
Yep.
At least, so.
But thirty, so twelve hundred, I should just do the math on it. It's somewhere in the round, right around four thousand square feet where thirty, twelve hundred is thirty percent of it. So if you said thirty, twelve hundred square feet up to a single family home of four thousand and then thirty percent of the habitable area after four thousand, it'd be effectively the same.
Right, which seems like it's easier just to say.
Yeah, it's easier to keep it the way it is.
I don't know if that, I, I think we might just talked in a circle.
The difference, the difference between.
What's your suggestion?
I, I was asking to keep the fifty percent up to four thousand square feet. I think that's.
Which would enable, which would enable, which would cap ADUs at two thousand square feet.
And I'm okay with that.
I think capping ADUs at two thousand.
It's the function. The function at fourth, but you would, you would, you could still have a, you know, ten thousand square foot, single family home that has a three thousand square foot ADU. You can't have a hard cap at two thousand.
Okay.
Because the state requires you to be allowed to have thirty percent.
But we can revert to the thirty percent size. I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, after four thousand square feet, it's thirty percent. Up to four thousand square feet, you get fifty percent.
Yeah, okay. So it's adding another thing. So it's like not to exceed thirty percent of the total habitable area for single family homes, four thousand feet and below. Not to exceed fifty percent for larger.
The other way around.
Oh.
Other way around. And below fifty percent.
Yeah, okay, okay.
What the function of it is, is, is you really end up with homes between, single family homes between twenty-four hundred and four thousand square feet would be able to have a larger ADU than twelve hundred square feet. That's the fun, that's the difference between the thirty and the applying thirty or fifty is you could have, nothing would ever, the ADU would never be larger than, for that size range, it would never be larger than half the size of the existing home. But it does enable things that are seventeen hundred square feet or whatever, based on the scale of the, of the home in that sort of middle size range, which we have, we have a good number of in, you know, Butler Farms, Cider Mill, like there's a lot of homes in there that are in between the like twenty-four hundred and four thousand.
And they have big backyards.
And some of them are on larger lots. Yep.
That works, I think.
Yeah, there were some people stick, trying, saying they liked the twelve hundred. Is, are people okay with that? Fifty percent.
It felt like we were keeping the twelve hundred.
Fifty percent, four thousand and below, thirty percent above.
Did you have a question about this item? Yeah, go ahead.
Mike?
And your name.
No, I know it's Ryan, but I said Mike.
Ryan, so in the event that you have a, a home up to a certain size, can have an ADU of fifty percent. And then you go over that amount and you drop to thirty percent, then you actually have a range where you actually have to have a ADU smaller than if your home were initially smaller.
Yep.
So that's very odd.
Yep, it's, it, when lines like this have to be drawn in regulations, that happens all the time.
Well.
The bad spot.
And, and so the other thing I, I want to point out is a twelve hundred square foot home might seem like a large ADU in certain post-war neighborhoods where the homes were initially twelve hundred square feet. It's, I, I actually don't think it's bad to allow them to be even larger, just for this really obscure example, which happened in a town nearby. Two people I knew got a divorce, but they couldn't, they didn't want the kids to go back and forth over a long distance, but they couldn't afford for one of them to move out into a separate home in the neighborhood because of the property expenses. So they set about trying to convert like an old garage into a house for the other parent. And the, the restrictions with sizing became a really big issue after some years, as both parents were able to remarry and then one was stuck in a very small home, for example. And so just to put it in perspective, like you might need some kind of a feature to limit the ADU from going over a hundred percent or a hundred and ten percent of the original home size. But maybe allow a larger minimum size. Were not, is that making sense what I'm saying?
I would just, I would just say from the, we thought about some of that from the staff side and the commission hasn't discussed that, but at some point it's more of a, we, the, the city in, during the interim zoning process a few years ago adopted a some restrictions on having multiple principal structures on a single lot. So at some point your ADU is no longer accessory, you would have, you would, the city policy would be that you should subdivide. And then that's why some of the lot coverage limits are there. Some of the other things is that if you have room to put a house, that's a hundred percent of the size of your current house, then you should probably be subdividing those lots into two smaller lots. Some sort of, sort of clean property ownership perspective, but that's just where, where we were is that if your ADU starts getting very large, then, then it should be on two lots.
That subdivision process come with a certain amount of legal cost to it?
Some, but it would be a very simple subdivision. It'd be called a minor subdivision and something else that we're talking about today is actually allowing that to be administrative.
And you know, I think some communities do have these accessory dwelling units that are very, really very quite small. I mean, what we were just talking about, twelve hundred square feet is inappropriate, it's an appropriate three bedroom home.
Yeah.
So.
Bigger than my house was initially.
You.
I think it's bigger than my house.
You're, you are, I believe you're allowed in, under state law to just say thirty percent and not have the other cap of, of a, of a larger unit. So you could hypothetically have a, you know, a fifteen hundred square foot house that only, you can, you can only have a four hundred and fifty square foot ADU. I've, I've lived in apartments smaller than that. So it's, it is, it's already a little more flexible on the larger side than, than has to be under state law.
Given our need for housing, I don't have a problem with a twelve hundred square foot ADU being built if it's size appropriate for the lot. And I think it could provide a comfortable home for a family of three or something like that. So I kind of like having that extended limit, but also limiting it, limiting it on the, on the big upside.
Yeah, that's, that was my, that was my thinking when I was like, we have to touch ADU stuff anyway, so why don't we do some, some tweaking. It also makes it, you know, if you are renting it to someone else, you can charge more rent for a three bedroom instead of a two bedroom, generally speaking. So maybe it makes more sense. You'd, you'd recoup the cost of construction or conversion or whatever more quickly. Like there's some other, other pieces of the finances.
Well, I mean, ARP had some interesting stuff of several months ago about ADUs and how, you know, the, the original homeowner, a divorced woman, or no, a widow, widowed woman. She wanted to stay in her house, but it was too big for her. And so the people bought the house, built her up, up very nice.
It was her children.
It was her children. Yeah, that's right. So they built the ADU for her, lived in the original house, but it was, it was a, you know, nice size for her, but I could see not wanting to feel like put out into the shed. And, and having a, a nicer size, like twelve hundred square feet for one person is a, a good amount of space, you know, if it's, if it's, yeah, that's, that's a nice sized house.
Yeah, and you know, I think I, I grew up in a similar situation. It was a, a big old rambling farmhouse. And at some point when my grandparents' kids grew up and went away, you know, they, they split the house in half by like building walls and closing doors so that they were able to rent to different people, like half the house, and it wound up being a two bedroom and a three bedroom. And then as we were, as we grew up, they slowly like reopened doors and we, you know, we wound up, you know, taking it all back over. But, you know, I think that that's the point of changing B, I think it is, like up above where it says that it could be done at the time, at the original time of application or, or later that, or at another time, I think is an important piece to be in there. Because that's what, it makes it more flexible for kind of aging in place or other situations.
So where are we? Are we fifty percent on a, on a, an ADU can be, can be fifty percent of the size of a house that's four thousand square feet or less with a cap, a hard cap of two thousand square feet, a hard cap of twelve hundred for buildings less than four thousand.
Hard cap of twelve hundred.
And then thirty percent for buildings over.
No.
Not to exceed.
No, no. Let's have Kelsey say it.
Wait, I'm not, just, I want to understand above two, above four thousand square feet, the cap is thirty percent.
Right. Above four thousand square feet, you would get thirty percent of your original, of the single family home. Below four thousand square feet, you would get either fifty percent or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So effectively between twenty-four hundred and four thousand, you get fifty percent. And below twenty-four hundred, you get twelve hundred. Because below twenty-four hundred, fifty percent is, is twelve hundred. So if you had an eighteen hundred square foot house, you still get twelve hundred. But if you have a twenty-six hundred square foot house, you get thirteen hundred, not twelve hundred.
Okay.
General agreement on that?
Yeah, but before you leave this page, Kelsey, in that, under C, the sentence is a little, at least to my mind, not easily understood. Shouldn't we have that last part that's in red? Say, if said conversion is subject to site plan review? Because we've got subject to site plan a residential development subject to site plan review, including conversion of non-residential structures to, to residential use if a site plan, if subject to a site plan review. The conversion is what's subject. Correct?
Yes.
So shouldn't we say that if said conversion is subject to a site plan review?
I think we're saying the same thing, but someone else can correct me.
Not, it's just not clear. I think it could be very much.
So what is, what the lang?
It's a little ambiguous to put.
What the language was, was saying here is that some residential development is not subject to site plan review and there are some conversions of non-residential structures to residential uses that would be subject to site plan review. So if you convert a non-residential structure to a single family home, it's a different thing than if you convert a non-residential structure to a sixplex. So that's just how I wrote it. And I can, I can look at this again and, and when I present the other language, we can talk about it. I just don't want to get.
Moving on to parking spaces?
Yeah, generally the city is in compliance with the parking requirements of S one hundred. We have a couple, there were a couple that needed to be changed. This is in thirteen. You would not, it's, it's, we recommend simplifying these to be point seven five spaces per dwelling unit for, for studio and one bedroom units and one space per dwelling unit in, for two plus bedroom units, because you actually can't require more than one. There's still, you're still allowed to require, or to, to require more spaces in areas that are quarter mile, that are areas not served by water and sewer and a quarter mile away from public parking. So this would just be in, applying to those areas that are in water and sewer served areas close to public. in water and sewer served areas close to public parking. It's just changing some of the numbers.
So that replaces what we had was, which is no, no minimum.
There is, there has been, there is still a minimum for residential. There is no minimum for commercial. There is a residential minimum for multifamily housing.
If you're a quarter of a mile from public transportation.
Public parking.
Public parking. Uh, if you're a quarter of a mile from public parking, why do you need to have parking?
If you're more than a quarter mile from public.
No, I'm saying here, you're saying point seven five.
Yep.
Spaces per dwelling unit.
Yep.
But we don't have any minimums for commercial.
Right.
Why do we need minimums for residential that are within a quarter of a mile of public parking?
That's a bigger conversation. This is one of those that I was recommending that this, we come basically into strict compliance with S one hundred. The studio and one bedroom units being point seven five spaces is a little bit farther than the one that you can't have as a minimum. I would say from a policy perspective, we don't have sufficient truly public parking in South Burlington to require zero residential parking in multifamily development.
I was just thinking, there's some people that don't use cars.
Sure. And which is, which, which is why it's point seven five per dwelling unit and not one or two.
Okay.
Okay. Next piece, we have these minor items. Oh no, it's not minor items. It's the administrative. This is a big item, but to allow the administrative officer to approve the minor subdivisions. Thoughts or questions on this?
What is the biggest minor subdivision? What, what is the biggest subdivision that would fall under this?
Not talking to you, I'm talking to this.
He would ask that.
This guy.
How big is the biggest minor subdivision that would be excluded, would be allowed to be reviewed administratively?
I can pull that up. Just give me a second. Yep.
Oh, three B. By the way, that copy of the LDRs that I have doesn't go to the page if you click on the contents.
It's because we keep changing little stuff all the time.
We're working on it.
Well, we're on page fifteen, Michael.
It has not been.
Maybe if we do like a big chunk in like February or March, they can do a big reconnection of.
So mine just did. So maybe you just need a new copy. I can get you a new copy.
You'd send me a new copy too. I'd appreciate it.
No.
Ah, come on. What'd I do?
You'll get the old copy.
You get the old copy.
Probably be good if you email all of us, the, the most recent PDF, because there have been a
There have been some changes.
Changes that we could make sure we're all on the same page.
Laurie, is your concern that things will slide through that shouldn't slide through?
What with the change? Oh, here.
Yeah, yes.
No, I just want to understand. In Burlington, I've seen some projects that really should have gone to the DRB that were handled administratively. And it was like, that really should have been a, a DRB approved. So.
So there were a few things talking to our DRB staff that they, when I, when, when I was, I've been working on some specific language, but it wasn't in good enough shape to give to you all today. Specific language that would always allow the administrative officer to get, put something to the DRB that if, and also that you would have, it would only be administratively approvable if it is under strict compliance with the LDRs and does not require any waivers, use of TDRs, use of, you know, any of these sort of bonuses and things like that. Like it would only be sort of very letter of the law, very clear administrative.
So if I came in with a hundred and fifty unit housing development that fit absolutely within the letter of the law.
So, no.
So that's what I'm saying. What's the, what's the upside of the minor?
So minor, as currently defined, is this. Existing lot tractor parcel into two lots, including the pair and retain lot, if the lot to be created is less than two times the minimum lot area for the district in which it is located and either has required street fund frontage or shares highway access with the retained lot. Or a lot line adjustment or lot merger, which were defined up above that does not meet the requirements for administrative approval. Again, up above.
So that tells me the, the size that's.
So it's, it has to be two lots.
It could be a two lot subdivision.
Two lot subdivision and you can't have two big lots.
Yeah.
It has to be a big lot and a small lot or two small lots.
Two lot subdivision and lot line adjustments. So I.
Yeah. So what it would effectively be, and sorry for anyone who is still reading this, is up here, we have, and there'd be some other language that I have to work here, work in here, but it's as similar as it is up here. The administrative, administrative officer has the authority without DRB approval, yada, yada, yada. Under these things to do a lot line adjustment. And then small lot merger is effectively kind of the opposite of a lot line adjustment or, or administrative subdivision. This would still apply the DRB referral, but it would be expanded to say something along the lines of the administrator, administrative officer in their discretion could put any minor law, minor subdivision to the DRB. And as defining minor subdivision, I would probably add as likely C, and then this whole thing be moved up. C being does not require waivers of standards or use of a PUD or transferable development rights or any of those.
And prior to administrative approval, if someone's coming in for a minor subdivision, do they have to notify their butters? If it's, if it's administrative?
You have to notify your butters for a lot of things. Including, I think some of the small, even the lot line adjustments and, and things.
And I'm just asking that because if somebody was doing a subdivision of a lot and it was going to have a big impact on a neighbor. And the neighbor got notified and then came in and said, I've got a concern about this. Administrator would have the opportunity to send it to the DRB if they thought it was appropriate.
Um, I would generally say yes, except the intention of defining a minor subdivision in this way is that it is minor in that it would not be impacting neighbors.
Okay.
Very much. Generally, if you're doing two lots, you're not doing that many housing units. You're not adding a ton of traffic. You're not adding a ton of light or noise or whatever it is. So that's part of it being minor is that it would not be as intrusive to neighbors. So there's a little bit of squishiness there, I would say. And that can be clarified in how the language is written.
I just wanted to make sure that there is that opportunity for neighbors to weigh in because a subdivision might end up putting a house directly in a location next to a neighbor that would be really inappropriate.
I mean, this, this, the lot coverage, the setbacks, everything else that's protective of everybody else would still apply. So it wouldn't, none of you would, as, as I said, like not, you couldn't get a conditional use permit or a waiver from a setback or something else, or a height waiver or something through the administrative process. Any of that would go to the DRB. So the intention would be that a two lot subdivision of reasonably small lots with all the same lot coverage limits, setback requirements, height restrictions, size, all these other things. Would almost definitionally not be unreasonable for a property owner to build next to an existing home.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this or concerns?
So generally speaking, you're like, if the administrative officer has the authority to kick an application to the DRB, the same, what I said about not, not granting waivers and all of that. Then you would generally be good with administrative minor subdivision.
Yes.
Yeah. Not, not having exemption.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're nearing the end of this discussion of item, agenda item five. Is, is there any other comment either from a peer or the audience on this item? Before we move on. Um, Vince?
If you could, Vince, if you could come to a microphone.
My name is Vince Boldak and I was just asked to come by the affordable housing committee because S one hundred is very important to us as we seek more housing, of course. I have a summary of S one hundred and I think it perfectly addresses, and, and this was written by a lawyer involved in it. It, it allows, this very issue of minor subdivision allows, allows, doesn't mandate, allows towns to give their administrative officer authority to approve minor subdivisions and decide if a hearing is required for minor subdivisions. And so I, I think that does it. I think what you're doing perfectly conforms to the intention.
Great. Thanks so much, Vince. Okay. Was that, I think we can move on to agenda item six, which is the discussion of changing zoning districts. Initial discussion, I guess we can say preliminary. Changing and consolidating would both be changing.
Just starting over.
You don't want that though.
No, I do not want that. Yeah. So I guess does, does anyone need background or was the memo like sufficiently explanatory on this point? I'm happy, whatever anyone needs.
Well, the, the table, at least on Allen Road, AR, doesn't make arithmetic sense. I don't think you can get twelve six thou, you can get twelve six thousand square foot lots into an acre.
No, it's units per acre or minimum lot size. So you could have a lot that has a six bed, six unit building on it. It's not the same. It's not all single family homes.
Okay.
Six hundred square feet, you get twelve units per acre is what they're saying.
Yeah. Okay. I thought the minimum lot size was what dictated it, that you had.
There's, there are some creative math in these tables as of now that we need to be adjusting anyway. So this is just another example where you're, the, the, so single, so for your example of single family home in Allen Road, you could hypothetically have a a lot, a, a single acre that has a six thousand square foot lot that has a single family home. But then the rest of that acre could have multifamily on it with different unit requirement. It doesn't have to all be single family homes if you do one acre. So.
The rest of that lot, you mean?
Yeah. Yes.
That's okay. So, and then there's in, between the two, Swift Street and Allen Road, the big differences, but as you pointed out, between non-residential, uh, between multifamily and in the one cases, three and a half thousand square foot minimum lot size and twelve units per acre. And the other one is six thousand square foot. It seems to me that we should go to the higher density if we can in both. And the same would apply to the allowed non-residential uses. Let's make them the same.
So yeah, that's the general conversation. This I included as an example of two zoning districts that for historical and other reasons have over time been different. And it's the, my question that I'm posing to the commission is are, is the commission comfortable with staff coming back in, either on the December twelfth meeting or the first in January with suggestions on how to consolidate districts to where, where it makes logical sense. So things like AR and Swift. The things that I highlighted in yellow are things that are not compliant with S one hundred. So it's kind of doing two things at once. There's some changes that are required to be compliant with S one hundred. So in this, in this case, you can't have a different requirement for two family than for single family homes. But so that's why those are, are highlighted. But also those two districts, we are as an example, this is just an example, considering that as sort of, those are transitional districts between more commercial Shelburne Road and more residential up on Spear. So do those things need to be different or not? There's also a question of all of the low density residential districts. So R one, R two, R four. Do those, do you want to keep those as sort of separate? There are a lot of residential, there are a lot of districts that the only functional differences between them are the densities. And when the density has to be five, there's very little functional difference. The other thing that we would, would need to be exploring in the next meeting is South Burlington already has a very complex zoning district system. We are hoping to be able to consolidate districts and also to change zoning district boundaries where appropriate to match and where you want sewer and water service to be. Instead of having sewer and water service area being another overlay district on top of sort of the other zoning districts underneath. Cause what we don't want is to have, you know, you could hypothetically keep an R two district if you really wanted to. But then have an overlay district for water and sewer that makes that area under the overlay district functionally R five, but it's still in the R two, like it could make it extremely messy and bad. So it would be our suggestion to, it would staff suggestion to change, to really look at the water and sewer map that we work on in the next couple of meetings and change boundary lines if there are areas that you think should still remain under R five. And then other areas where it becomes R five or, or commercial or whatever else. I also wanted to just quickly in this conversation. Show you.
Our complicated map.
Our current map.
Which we've got at the bottom of there. Looks like a quilt.
Which looks like a quilt. That's exactly right.
Looks like a schizophrenic.
It's a real scrappy, it's a scrappy quilt. It's a modernist quilt.
If you're colorblind, you'd never zone, zoning.
So there are.
Way too many colors.
A lot of colors. There's a lot of different things. So like, for example, this little guy underneath the word Kennedy is actually the R seven NC. And what we've been talking about with the city plan is allowing small neighborhood scale residential in a lot of our lower density residential areas that don't currently, or neighborhood scale commercial in a lot of our residential areas where it's not currently allowed. So having an R seven, so the NC is neighborhood commercial. It doesn't make a lot of sense to keep R seven NC as separate from R seven, which is the rest of sort of this area. If we're intending to allow small scale commercial in the rest of R seven. The same is true. There's a couple of weird spots over here. Where is the other? Like there's some patchwork stuff because of UVM and there's not a lot we can do about that. But like, for example, this is Allen Road here. And this is Swift here. And they're both fairly small. They're both transitional. We would like to have a conversation at some point if this area and this area should actually be the same as sort of this part of Heinsberg Road. When we've had conversations about the city plan and allowing some mixed residential in the commercial areas along the northernmost part of Heinsberg Road. Should that also be the same zoning district? Cause there's nothing that says the zoning districts have to be contiguous. And it's actually a lot easier if they're not. To, to just have fewer zoning districts in more places. So it's more consistent. So there's a few of thing, few things like that. There are a few funny squiggly spots over here that require a little bit more mapping. This village commercial district in the SEQ doesn't do a lot of function compared with this, which I think is called VR around it. So there's some potential consolidation. Um, so there's some co- po- potential consolidation in the SEQ, especially if we talk about. Having sort of the sewer and water served areas and then not. You could potentially bring the SEQ numbers down to like two or three districts instead of.
Five.
Five. Um, there's also opportunity here. Um, the C one R fifteen, the C one R twelve, the C two, which is the sort of fuchsia color. C one auto is little cars. Um, there is some potential opportunity there. It's, I guess the bigger question is it's. It's moving further away from regulating uses in areas. Um, I'm hoping Paul Engels will be on board with me on this, that it's, it's moving away from. Specific uses being regulated and more towards what we've talked about a lot, which is the form of buildings and the size of buildings. And the, the visual aesthetics and the feel of a place being more what's regulated. Um, there are certain areas that we would argue remain separated. So Queen City Park would probably remain separated just because of its historical development pattern. It has um very small lots, but is single family and residential. It's a little bit different. But this R one L. Lake Shore is orange. This is R one Lake View is this little stripey guy here. Um, are all very similar and all have to go up in um. Density. So all of those, even just, even just consolidating the R ones. Is consolidating districts, but then also you have your R one up here, which is your regular R one, R one PRD, which are there and there. And then you have R two, which might, I don't even remember what color R two is. Do, 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 R two is sort of orange, orange dots. So it's like here, I think. Yeah, R two is here, R four is in here. Um, so there's a pretty good section of our residential area right here between s- Shelburne. Between the commercial areas on Shelburne Road and Spear Street. Um, that it would be great to have some direction from the commission is, are there areas there that should remain different? Um, and for what reason? Or are the, does that whole area become? You know, our five, our six, whatever number we land on is being appropriate. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be a minimum of our five. You could decide, actually, we want all these things to be our seven. Because we want it to be the same as Kennedy Drive. Not advocating for that. I'm saying these are the conversations that we need to have in the next couple of meetings. But what I need to know for my work in the next couple of weeks is direction from, from all of you about. How much appetite there is for some of this consolidation? Is there an appetite for consolidation of the low density residential, considering they all have to go to R one? In the water and sewer service areas. Um.
You are five.
Our five. They've come from R one, go to R five. There's a lot of numbers. Um, and is there the same appetite for some of these commercial, is there a reason for? This part of Shelburne Road to be different from this part of Shelburne Road?
And I mean, we've already, we have already suggested the consolidating a lot of the C.
Yep.
When we were looking at the Tesla, uh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'd made a suggestion to consolidate a few and, and previously AR and SW, but.
Yep.
Uh, honestly, um, Kelsey, I don't see how we can do this before we've actually got that map.
I guess it's more, it's, that's understood. Um, what I wanted to just get direction from you all now is. On some of the uh. Are there particular areas or particular uses that you think need to be regulated separately? From sort of gen- general, commercial, general, like retail, um. That would, would mean that I don't spend much time on figuring out how to consolidate this. Yeah.
So quick que- uh, it sounds like R one, R two and R four are all essentially gone, gone.
Um.
What, what, what would be the purpose? If, if they are now all R five according to the state, what would be the purpose of keeping them?
So if you decided that um for, for whatever reason. You wanted there to be sort of a transitional zone somewhere, you could have some areas be. Our eight, but then other are areas be R five. Or do you want them all to go to? R five. So like, I guess thinking about this whole, like, everyone is, is pretty familiar with this whole area. Um. Are there areas that should be thought of as distinct from the others in sort of? If you thought fifty years from now, if this whole thing has the same zoning district, the intention of zoning is that. In fifty years and a hundred years, that's what it will look like. Is there anything that should be regulated differently for whatever reason?
Well, I think, I think the second point is that it might wind up being at least two. Maybe there's some areas that aren't served by water and sewer and shouldn't be served by water and sewer.
Yeah.
That could stay our one, our two, our four. So I think that's part of it. And that's the part that Michael was saying. We can't, we couldn't, we couldn't today say, yes, take all those.
Right.
Um, right the second, but we could be thinking about like, okay, maybe there's a few of these that could get consolidated. Um, except for areas that we want to reserve for non.
Yeah, I guess.
Sewer district areas.
Can, can I ask?
What's the zoning in here west of R one along Spear? The two different, the dotted zone to the south.
This is our.
One, yeah.
That's our four.
And the one down here.
This is our two.
Doesn't make sense.
Well, is that my, that's related to my question. Is the reason that those are different just based on what the existing development is?
Kind of. Um, it's an interesting thing that, y- yes, sort of, but also there's a lot of non-conforming lots already in there. So um, there are significant numbers of, there's a lot of lots in sort of the orchards and Brewer Parkway area. That are not quarter acre lots. They're less than quarter acre lots. So historically, they actually were more dense. The regulations allowed for more dense uses and at some point, the city decided to require larger lots. Um, so some of it reflects historical patterns and some of it. Um, honestly, I don't, I don't know.
And, yeah, because, I mean, change, all these.
Some of its market forces and things like, like this neighborhood here was built after this neighborhood here. So in the seventies, eighties, nineties, you know, the appetite was for, you know, half acre lots. Where in the fifties, forty, fifty, sixties, like, you know, fifth of an acre lots were fine, you know? There's some of those sort of, just how things were built out historically.
So in other words, the changes may not have an immediate effect.
Absolutely.
Even if it goes to a higher density, a lot of those houses are the way they are.
Yep.
And until somebody else who maybe has a creative vision for how they would, you know, perhaps put two or three units on that same lot.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's true with any zoning.
Which is what will inevitably happen, but.
Yeah.
For, for the, for the most part, for the foreseeable future, that it's not going to really change.
That's true, um, for any kind of zoning and that's true for almost all of these areas. Because m- most of South Burlington is, is built to, to what it can be, not the southeast quadrant necessarily, but. Um, where the density changes the most would be sort of the R one and R two. Um, those would immediately be able to be subdivided into two lots or more. Um, so if you owned a home, like this is Baycrest in this area, if you owned a home on a half an acre lot in Baycrest, you can subdivide it. And put a second home on the second lot today, under state law.
And a lot of the lots on the northern part of R one, there are three acres and more.
There's some there, um, but then the trick is like, right here is not served by water and sewer. So there's some, like the very northern part by, up by Swift, these, these last like five or six lots are not served by water and sewer.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, um, Paul Engels?
Yes, um, so uh to put my two cents in for the moment, if I may. These are all two, uh T two, T three and T four. And could be zoned that way if we so chose. Um, I would also, I'd like to ask if this is the beginning of. A discussion of streamlining the LDRs.
Yes.
Yes. Because we can approach it that way, we can.
Absolutely. So, so I will, I will say to you, Paul, that. Every LDR amendment that I bring to you, I'm going to bring to you in the most streamlined way I can.
Yeah.
Um, we get requests and we get development agreements, we gather things where we have to do very precise changes to the LDRs to solve very precise problems. But I will, uh, this is my, you know, promise to the whole commission that if I come to you with changes, that I am going to be advocating for the most. Streamlined, appropriate changes to the LDRs that I, that I think uh in my professional judgment are warranted.
So if we work from this way out towards the LDRs.
Mm-hmm.
We could significantly. Um, I always think, you know, minimize the LDR.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely. Um, there's sort of.
Holiday.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know?
Absolutely. Um, there are, there's sort of two, two pieces to this, I think. Um, what we really need to accomplish, what the commission needs to accomplish in the next few months. Is bringing South Burlington into compliance with S one hundred. Um, cause we are already running into um the DRB having to analyze applications under both things. Under sort of our existing rules and, and under state law. So there are things that we need to do. And we will do them in, it mu- from my perspective, I'll advocate for the, for the commissions to do them in the most streamlined and logical way possible. Um, but there are things that the city needs to do to come into compliance with S one hundred. Um, it would be my intention in the next six months to a year after that. We'd be going through and, and systematically really looking at the LDRs and, and streamlining uh further. And, and moving that process along, but we do need to do that sort of first chunk first.
That's great. Um, I, I do want everybody to keep in mind that it is possible to look at this map as T three. You know, T four, uh, you know, pretty much all of South Burlington, maybe some T two where the. Where the green is in the southeast quadrant, you know, Cheese Factory Road or something like that. You know, all the browns, um, all the light greens, but teeth three probably. And, you know, Shelburne Road, I, I mean, personally, I don't think there is T five in the state of Vermont, but.
Well, the, the transacts are all relative.
Yeah.
To their setting. So like, something that would be a T five in Manhattan is not going to be the same as a T five in South Burlington. Um, it's all sort of a relative scale.
My point is we could reduce this all to basically three or four zones at the most.
Right, and that's something that I think the commission, from the staff perspective, the commission has the opportunity to discuss. Um, it is something that's going to take a more than three meetings and so we would need to kind of do. Not necessarily a Band-Aid, but we need to do a, a thoughtful and intentional. Um, update to the LDRs that brings South Burlington into compliance with state law. And then you can have those further conversations as, as we move forward in the next year or plus.
It's a great idea and a great way to approach it. It really is.
Um, Fran, do you?
Yeah, I, so the, the table that I had so much trouble with.
Mm-hmm.
Is this what exists now?
Yes.
And then, so I guess what I don't understand, so a single family requires a six thousand square foot lot?
Yes.
So what is the significance of the units per acre?
So South Burlington is interesting in that it regulates both minimum lot size and units per acre. Um, so you're would, if you had a multi, you could. The, the, the maximum units per acre in some of these are, would require you to mix types. You couldn't achieve it with only single family homes. Um, it would be a maximum unit density of all the things that you developed on your site of, of twelve or of, or of seven. But your lot size would be determined by what type of housing you're using. So your single family home would require a certain lot size and your multifamily ro- would require a different lot size per unit. So there's, there's some complicated.
So we're looking to.
And one's a minimum and one's a maximum, right?
Correct.
They're not, they're actually, it doesn't use the word maximum units per acre, but that's actually what it, the twelve is a maximum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the six thousand's a minimum.
I guess so what I'm asking is, um, are we looking to change that? So all we have is density and not the square foot requirement?
You could do either. You could keep, well, you could do, there's three things. You could keep having density and a minimum lot size. You could have just minimum lot size or you could have just density. And there's policy reasons to do any of those things. Um, hypothetically, if you had just density and no minimum lot size, you could have, you know, two thousand square foot lots with very small homes. And then one really big lot with a multifamily and maybe that's fine. Um, if you went with just minimum lot size, then you could, you would enable spacing. But you wouldn't have as much creativity and housing type. Um, so there's, there's sort of pros and cons to go in any direction with, with some of that.
Okay.
Hmm.
I'm just, just, I, just from my own education, I kind of had to go back and look at the charts for the existing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, residential types and so even now under R seven and R twelve. We have six thousand square foot for single family, but then it jumps up to ten thousand square foot minimum lot size for two family. And my understanding is S one hundred changed that.
Correct.
So that you need, you could put a six thousand square feet, you could put a two family resident.
Yes.
On six thousand square feet and that was a huge change.
Yes.
Um, just, I didn't know if everybody understood that, but it was.
Why, so he's like, okay, um. So that's why these are yellow, cause technically, um, these, the two, two family numbers in, in this. Just in this example of Allen Road and Swift Street, those are out of compliance for, from, for S one hundred. Both because they're different from the single family home and because they're larger than um quarter, uh, two tenths of an acre.
So the, the most flexibility and perhaps um interest. You know, uh, variety would be if we just use density.
Um.
Cause the lot could be, as you said, you could have small lots with three or four houses on them. And you could have one big lot with one house on it.
Right.
And that, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, Swift is that kind of, of area which is currently mixed. You know, you've got a lot of housing on Farrell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you've got a prison which I'm sure is not going to be there forever. That's too valuable a piece of land for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you've got office, an office building, uh.
Oh.
So it's an interesting, it's an interesting district.
So these are coming attractions for, for December and January. For, these are all the conversations that we're going to have and, and one of the things that Donna's point actually raises is. Um, when we have both regulated in South Burlington, um, if you set the. Density, you could have a situation where you, because single family homes and duplexes have to be treated the same. For dimensional requirements, if you had an acre with five. You know, fifth of an acre lots, you could have five single family homes, you would also be allowed to have five duplexes. Which would technically be ten units per acre. So then it's not five units an acre, so calling it a five unit an acre. Zone isn't correct, but then you've suddenly incentivized everything to be duplexes and maybe that's what you want. But, you know, then you're, it, it's just, there's, there's, there's some significant disconnect in different parts of the law. That needs to be worked out. And that's, I think what my point in some part of my memo was. Um, there's been a lot of discussion in the planning community um about sort of the, the interpretation of what's correct. Like, how do we make all these things make sense together in the law? Um, it's an important conversation, but I don't think it's actually the necessary conversation. Um, it's important to know some, like approximately where the basement is on, on a lot of these things. But I don't, I would not advocate that's where South Burlington wants to be falling. Um, there are a lot of these things where I don't think you need to scrape the bottom of compliance um to be appropriate for South Burlington. Um, for a lot of reasons, for, for our sort of cur- current built environment, for our loc- for the location in central, central Chittenden County. Um, and not to be overlooked, you know, you buffer the city a little bit from litigation if you go above. The, the most conservative interpretations. Um, so those are all things for the, for you all to be considering in the next month or two. Um, that will need to be discussed, but just.
We should also.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not forget that one of the targets of the climate action plan is not to go, is, is twelve units per acre.
Right.
And uh wherever we, wherever we can and here's some opportunities for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I have, so if you could go back to the map.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. You know, I'm not a hundred percent welded to staying with uses in a traditional sense. And, you know, I. And, you know, I really like the transacts that Paul brought up, but I do agree, it feels like a bigger project than just the next, like two months to, to leapfrog over this interim step of maybe combining zoning districts and kind of keeping our current structure, but trying to get closer to that. And then maybe a second step of even further consolidating. But there are some uses, I think, that people are, are really care about. Maybe it's just my, my thinking, but like the auto district has been something that there's been a lot of discussion about, and I think there's not a huge appetite for just massive expansion of car lots necessarily. And I might, it might just be me, but I feel like there might be some zoning districts that are important to distinguish between uses in different areas. And I don't think we need all like fifty, but, um, there might be some other uses like that that we wanna preserve a different district for. Like you mentioned Queen City Park, makes total sense. The auto district maybe makes sense, like.
And to make it even more complicated, whatever we do has to be aligned with city plan twenty twenty four. Um, and if we went with transacts, how would we do, how would we have to, we'd have to do a lot of changes in the comp plan?
Um, not.
Or, or the other way around.
Yeah, not, not necessarily. Um, you can write form-based, it's, form-based codes are not sort of one size fits all, so you could write in any way that you wanted to. Um, I think what would be more appropriate than complete agnostic, being agnostic to use is a little bit like what we have here where there are some, you know, there are some transacts that require commercial on the first floor and residential, like there are some, there are still some use requirements, but it's not dividing between um, a hotel versus an extended stay hotel or, um, one kind of like a grocery store versus a shoe store versus a something else store. Like, there are some uses that can be consolidated. Um, it's something that we talked about the other day with the um, transportation demand management, like maybe small retail is just small retail and it doesn't matter exactly what it is. So you can swap out, you know, your, your small shoe store for a small chocolate store for a um, a chiropractor's office or something, as long as it's under a certain number of square feet. Um, so it's some of that kind of thinking. Um, one example, when Jessica was just mentioning things that you would want to keep separate, that I think that there's another district that needs to remain as a separate kind of district is the C one air and air. There's two here, there's air and C one air. Um, there are some differences here. I think city policy generally would not be to, and you don't have, um, you don't see like the airport itself on this map, but you know, I don't think this area in particular is, um, you know, well suited for mixed uses or educational facilities or, you know, certain things, um, where, you know, this area would be, you know, so there's, there's some things like, like auto uses, like some of the air uses. Um, we've had this conversation before about industrial uses and reserving industrial use space. Um, I think that doesn't necessarily have to be in this conversation because, um, S one hundred is dealing with residential. So the pri, the primary thrust of the conversation in the next couple of months has to be the residential uses and, and coming into compliance with allowing residential uses at different, um, dimensional requirements and densities in different parts of the city. And some of the conversation about commercial uses can potentially be pushed out a little bit if, if necessary, if we can't sort of get through it.
Um, in light of what you were saying, I think that we need to look at Shelburne Road corridor at some point. Like we have Williston Road and City Center. Um, you know, Denny's is closed now, so that whole corner of Swift and, um, Shelburne Road is now basically vacant, yeah, open for until. There's all that property that I believe Hannaford owns and, uh, um, for the most part, I think Palmero administers. That's all of that that could easily be the size of City Center that.
Make a great park.
Yeah, or any of it, you know what I mean? But nobody's really, I don't think, really thinking all that much about it, you know, we're like, so, okay, fine. You know, if Tesla wants to have a car dealership, fine, they can have a car dealership. You know, that's kind of the extent of attention that we paid to Shelburne Road, you know? And the airport, I, you know, my experience with the airport is it's a technology park, really, you know, I mean, I think we could start looking at the airport as a technology park. There's a lot of different businesses that are under the auspices of basically the city of Burlington, you know?
Yeah, and it's just the point that I was trying to make is, is if we're talking about sort of this area over here and potentially allowing, the city plan maps allow, are, are talking about allowing for mixed residential use sort of in part of like the tech park in Meadowlands area, Tilly Drive area. Um, maybe that is appropriate for mixed residential, but north of Williston Road may not be. So that might be a part where like, this is all currently, it's currently all purple and maybe that actually gets divided. Um, where then maybe this sort of stripey part actually gets folded into whatever the south of Williston Road purple becomes. Um, so there's some reworking of the commercial districts as well. Um, the one thing that is important to note, and we'll talk about it more later, is if you allow, if it's if it's served by water and sewer, municipal water and sewer, and it allows any residential, it has to be five. Um, so it's not like you could say, oh, you can have a little bit of residential here, like it does, allowing any residential does change some of the finances and like the, you know, development potential in certain commercial areas. Um, you can't say, oh, you can have two units in your commercial structure, you have to allow five units an acre. So there is some, there are some wrinkles in the conversation.
So I, um, I think that focusing on the residential right now is totally appropriate. And I really like consolidating, collapsing, eliminating in a sensible way. I think that I still have a hard time having this conversation without the map.
Yeah, understandable.
And, but I'm one hundred percent in favor of having something that doesn't give me nightmares when I look at it.
To answer your question, we do, we definitely have the appetite. We're hungry.
Okay, yes. So, um, so it is nine, I think, um, yeah.
Question, just, you know, cause this, this sort of builds in my mind as we, as we leave this meeting, cause I don't quite understand what the compromise was, that the city made on, as with S one hundred regarding the natural resources, um, separation. So, you know, if you have a lot that has maybe thirty percent of it is, is, you know, clearly I either wetlands or forested or wildlife corridor or something like that. How, I mean, do you, can you exempt that from the area? And is it five units per acre for everything left over? Or how?
So these are, these are conversations that we're going to have to have. Um, one of the potential impacts of S one hundred is that the conservation PUD can't work the same way that it does now, which is the conserve seventy percent and, and develop thirty percent. It may be that you end up having to define the thirty percent as being like this part close to the road or wherever it is. Um, that's what I was saying before about the, the zoning districts, um, lining up with the water and sewer so that you have the areas that are defined as the five or the eight or the twelve or whatever are on this side of the line. And on this side of the line, no residential is allowed. Um, so you'd have large, some of these large parcels. What the effect would be is that it's telling people, like, you can't develop anything back here, but you can develop at a higher density in the front.
So, so currently, and, cause I don't know, well, obviously we'll see once we see the water and sewer maps, but you know, if along Heinsberg Road, the water and sewer as it extends right now only goes like a half the way.
Yep.
You know, down to the property line.
Yep.
And the half, the other half is likely to be those areas that are closest to the wetlands and the, in the uh, drainage area and the forested area and things like that. So because they don't have water and sewer there, does that say those areas don't apply? Um, or can it logically be extended to some of that area? And so it, it could, it could be a five units per acre.
You can set the water and sewer service area as lar, larger than your currently served area.
That's what I wonder.
So you can, you can define, the municipality can say, you know, you draw your squiggles and logically you have to draw your squiggles around where there are existing lines. But you can also say like, and we want this, this bump over here to be where our next, you know, trunk line extends. And that's somewhere we've, where we do want development, um, where maybe there currently aren't any, but you could have it set up that, like, that it has to be, that it can be part of your service area. It's not just defined as, you know, two hundred feet, four hundred feet, whatever, from existing lines. It's, the municipality can define sort of current and future planned sewer service and water service areas.
So is the map that you're going to show us.
Lots of options.
Going to be defining the smallest possible sewer overlay, or is it gonna be?
Options.
So there'd be several options on it.
That's the, that's the intention.
We'll have different colors and hatch marks and.
Yeah, I'm gonna put as many colors as I can find. Um, the intention, so currently there is a sewer or.
You read both.
Yeah, currently.
Are you doing field trips to figure, figure this out, or is that on our own that we have to?
Generally it would be on our own, considering that it's winter and it's dark.
No, it's, it's easiest time to get to some of these places.
Not in the, in the dark. Um, I would say, so, so just as a point of context, and now we're, we're bleeding into the next meeting's sort of context, but just to so that answering questions, we currently have a sewer service ordinance that if you are within two hundred feet of an existing line, you must connect to municipal sewer. That is the inverse of what S one hundred is saying, is that if you're in the sewer service era, area, you get a certain amount of dens, density. So it's sort of written in the opposite direction. Um, it is currently what the, our development review, um, staff and board are using as sort of a proxy, our best proxy that we have for a sewer service area. Um, but what that ends up creating is you can have weird little donut holes where it's, you know, the line goes here, here and here, and two hundred feet from all of those things actually leaves a hole that big. Where logically, it doesn't make sense that in the middle of some neighborhood or between two neighborhoods, you wouldn't want that to be developed, especially if it's not in one of our designated natural areas. Um, so I, I will be advocating in, in future meetings that it not, that sewer service area not be defined as a certain number of feet from an existing line, that it's an actual mapped thing that then defines the zoning districts. Um, because of the things like Donna said, like there are areas where we would, may want sewer service to go to in the future that it doesn't currently. Um, or covering some of those weird donuts that, you know, may not be within two hundred feet, but are two hundred and six feet. And you don't want it to be weirdly exempted because it is where we want a direct development for, for whatever, um, potential reason. Um, but we will only know where all of those little, little weird data holes and things exist when we get some of this mapping back.
So with that.
So with that.
We'll do that next meeting. Um, so we, other business, anything? Okay, we can adjourn. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
You asked about that northern part of Spear Street.